That's it? Okay, great. All right, good morning. I am pleased to call to order the March 21st, 2019 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, and I'm going to ask Kyle Lawmaker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Note the presence of all three commissioners, and I have just one opening comment. I want to remind everyone that Saturday, April 6th, is the first public opportunity to see our new voting system in action. There will be a demo, a demonstration, open to the public from 9:00 to 12:00, Saturday, April 6th, at the Ambler-Borough Hall. And we really want to encourage people to come. We are going to set up kind of a mock election, so people can actually see what it's like to get a pen and fill in an oval on a piece of paper. But really, most importantly, we're testing all the systems around that, what the experience is for the voter when they come in and register and get their ballot and go to vote. So, very excited about that. And then, just a couple of days later, on April the 9th, is our first conversation with the commissioners. That will be in the Upper Marion Township Building. At 6 o'clock that evening, on April 9th, there'll be another opportunity to see our voting system. There'll be another demo from 6:00 to 7:00. And then, at 7:00, the town hall conversation will begin. So, we hope that folks will get out and help us spread the word, so we can get as many people comfortable with this new voting system before the May 21st primary. Any other opening comments? Okay. Well, that will go on to approval minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March 7th, 2019, meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gale. Any board comments? All right, hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. Butler, pretty awesome manifest this year. We are excited to hear all the final details.
Well, good morning. Yeah, we are excited to share them with everybody today. This was, as they say, this jumped up a notch, too, with Manifest. She manifested more, 2019. So, I'm pleased to share this with you this morning, along with some of our Commerce Department staff and our colleagues at the IU here as well. This year's manifest was at the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center. It was on a Tuesday. It's typically been on the weekends. And this gave us a chance to do some things, the construction displays, let kids really kind of see how you build stuff. Don't think about that very often. We had great employer turnout, including members of our Workforce Development Board and their companies. We also had the Firebirds. This is the longest-running, all-girls robotics team on their sanctioning body. They're based here in Montgomery County, out of the Mount St. Joseph Academy. And they were the highlight of the day for their peers, to see what they've built. It's all about STEM education, about encouraging leadership and professionalism, what they did. So, that robot in the bottom-left picture, it can throw a ball, it can catch a ball, it can pick up things off the floor. It's controlled by an Xbox controller. And so, they just, really, some incredible stuff. A lot of excitement, a lot of positivity on the whole day. The discussions are already beginning about where do we go next year with this? Because it is, just take on a whole new life of its own. And to share more with you about that, I want to have our Deputy Director for Workforce Development, Jennifer Butler, come up.
Good morning.
Thanks, Dave. Good morning. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that we have going on, particularly in youth in workforce, beyond Manifest and More, which was a tremendous success this year. And I wanted to, first and foremost, thank you all, and also thank county leadership for your ongoing commitment to workforce in Montgomery County, our Workforce Development Board, our staff, our partners. I have Kyle here, who is both our youth program administrator and also a member of the Workforce Development Board. I have Melinda Onchita here, from our staff, who really spent countless hours organizing the logistics for Manifest, that I would definitely want to acknowledge. We couldn't do the work that we do without all of our partnerships and our support that we get from you. So, thank you so much. We appreciate it. We are thrilled with the turnout this year for Manifest. We had over 1,200 students in attendance, and I know you, all three of you were there, so you probably saw firsthand that there were, in fact, over 1,200 students in attendance. Could not, absolutely exceeded our expectations. We could not have asked for a better turnout. The feedback that we are getting from our educators, from our over 70 exhibitors that were there that day, has so far been really tremendous. And I think our employers across Montgomery County acknowledge that while they are, right now, making sure that they are in a position to sustain their current workforce, that they need to start thinking about building and growing their future workforce. And that is why it was so easy for us to get buy-in from our manufacturers and builders in Montgomery County, because they know that five years, 10 years, they're going to need to staff their companies. And they are in-demand occupations. We want our students to really consider these as options, to go to school for these options, and to plan a future career around these options. So, we are grateful. (laughing) I forgot to go through your slide check. I'm sorry. This is some of the numbers. I get excited when I talk about workforce. Just to talk about some of the other opportunities right now, to get involved in particularly youth programming around workforce in Montgomery County, I should note that Manifest is funded through a Pennsylvania Business Education Partnership Grant, which we are very grateful to have been recipients of in Montgomery County. And we did already receive funding for 2020, so we're planning Manifest 2020. Also, under that BEP funding, is the Dream It, Do It, What's So Cool About Manufacturing video contest. And if anyone has availability today, voting is open right now. We have students in Montgomery County, Bucks County, and Philadelphia County that have worked really hard to create these videos. So, if you have a chance, go on the website, is whatsocool.org, and vote today and tomorrow. Voting ends tomorrow. Also, our industry tours, which includes Manufacturing Day in the fall. We have been doing some really great work with pre-apprenticeships, acknowledging that we've been working to build our apprenticeships in Montgomery County. But the pre-apprenticeships, which leads directly into an apprenticeship program, is also so important. And we just last week had a celebration at Central Monco, around their construction trade pre-apprenticeship program. Our Teacher in the Workplace, which is active right now, and we are still awaiting word on funding for 2020. Our state and local internship program, which we are very excited about, that would essentially allow us to place students that are either in seniors in high school through college, in summer, paid internships. So, if you know of any businesses that would be interested in supporting these students, we welcome that. And always our ongoing collaboration with the Montgomery County Community College and their credentialing. Does anyone have any questions?
So, two quick, two-
One more thing I may add.
Yeah.
If you want to vote on the video, if you follow the Commerce Department, @MoncoCommerce, you'll find the link on there to vote on the What's So Cool About Manufacturing video.
And also, if you follow me on Facebook, you'll find it there, too.
That's great. So, two things I'd love to hear a little bit more about, because I think they're pretty innovative. One is the Teacher in the Workplace Program, and the other is what happens in the pre-apprenticeship programs and why they're important.
Okay. The Teacher in the Workplace Program essentially centers around getting our teachers out into the workforce, to be able to have some real-world experiences, and take that experience back to the classroom, to be factored into future curriculum development, how they are really instructing their students on what is expected of them in a workplace. We, right now, have three schools in Montgomery County that have funding through Teacher in the Workplace for this school year. We are still awaiting word on our funding for next year. Thus far, I know the surveys that are coming back in, the teachers have found the experiences to be invaluable. So, we're really hoping that we can continue that next year. And the pre-apprenticeships, really, for this year, our funding was focused on the collaboration with Central Monco Technical High School, and also ABC, around that construction pre-apprenticeship. That is definitely something that we are trying to promote, so that we get more educational institutions, more companies, interested in looking at our students that are still in high school, that are still making some career decisions, and get them moving on a path forward that could lead to an apprenticeship, that can lead to a high-paying, in-demand career.
So, if a company or organization was interested in getting more involved in that, how would they do that?
They could start by contacting me. And I would be happy to guide them through the process. We do have collaborations with several entities that can help grow and support, whether it be a pre-apprenticeship or an apprenticeship program.
Okay. And then, one final question. Are you evaluating, are you getting evaluations from the students who participated in Manifest, about how they found the experience, or how we can make it better?
Yes. We are, and that's really historically been how we've measured the success. It's a little difficult for us to report back a good measurement, other than students that are then expressing interest in our career technical centers. But we do send out a survey to our exhibitors, to our educators, and to our students, to get some feedback. And also, we did, this year, we did a scavenger hunt onsite, to just kind of get some, I think, in-time feedback from our students, and have found that really enlightening, and reminded me that I forgot to thank both Upper Providence Police Department and our Sheriff's Department for just being onsite to provide a little bit of flow. And I thought of that, because the students were big fans of the canine that was at Manifest. We learned that in the scavenger hunt.
That's always the case.
Yes.
Well, I want to thank you and congratulate you. As we often talk about, we are, this county is a net importer of jobs, of workers. Every day, we have more jobs than we do workforce in this county. And how critically important it is that we expose students to all possible, well-paying and very much in-demand careers that are here in this county, so that we can hopefully keep some of our kids close, and they become the future leadership of this county. So, really excited about this program, and congratulate you.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I can tell you that the staff, both the Monco Works staff and our partner staff, are very passionate about exactly that. So, that's what we work for every day.
Great.
Congratulations on an incredible manifest. When I left, there was literally a line of students waiting to get into the Expo Center, and the buses were still pulling up. So, I think moving it from a Saturday morning probably helped a lot. But I also felt a different level of energy in the room. The students really seemed engaged, and from the exhibitors that we spoke with, they mentioned that as well. Students were coming up to them and engaging and asking questions. So, we'll see what happens next year. You've got to keep pushing it higher.
They're going to need a bigger room, I think.
It truly is amazing to see how Manifest has grown over the years. I remember 2016, at Haverhill-Worsham High School on the Saturday morning, and then '17 and '18, at the Montgomery County Community College. That Expo Center was full. I mean, couldn't get anybody else in that room. And a special thanks to all the exhibits, exhibitors that participated, the manufacturing firms across this county. And we're proud to be the number-one county in the Commonwealth that leads in manufacturing. And anything we can do to let, again, younger generations know, and all the public across this county, the high demand for people skilled in manufacturing industry is crucial. And I'm glad to see that Manifest continues to grow over the years. So, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you so much for that. So, many of you may have thought yesterday was the first day of spring, but actually, it was National Small Business Development Center Day. And the three of us had the opportunity to visit the Temple-Ambler campus for a very exciting announcement, and I want to welcome Mara Shanker to tell us a little bit more about it.
And just real briefly, for everybody in the room, I just want to say, behalf of the Commerce Department, we're so excited to have this new Small Business Development Center branch in Montgomery County. As much as all the workforce development stuff we do is important for our future, entrepreneurship is just as important. And this new asset for county, and Mara's going to tell everyone all about it, so that as they have these dreams to start your new business, this is the place to go and propel that forward. So, Mara?
I totally think that's true, Dave.
I know.
First, thank you so much for joining us yesterday. We were thrilled that you were there. And we're very excited that we're open for business now at Temple Ambler. Let's see if I hit, oh, yes. All right. So, National SBDC Day celebrates the almost 1,000 SBDCs across the country. And in 2017, SBDCs helped start more than 14,000 businesses in the country. And the average increase in sales of businesses who work with the SBDC is 4.5 times the national average, an increase in gross revenue of more than 18 percent. So, companies that start and work with small business development centers tend to do better faster, which is something we love for new businesses. So, every single county in Pennsylvania is covered by one of 18 SBDCs. And Montgomery County is actually split between Temple SBDC and Lehigh University. And Jim Fisher, the director of Lehigh, was unfortunately ill and didn't join us yesterday, but he had planned to be there, because not only is Temple opening a new SBDC in Ambler, but we're also working hard to make sure that we don't just serve lower Montgomery, but we serve all of Montgomery County through this SBDC by collaborating better with Lehigh University. So, the SBDC is funded by the SBA, DCED, and Temple University. And because of our funding stream, most of the services that we offer are free to businesses and entrepreneurs. So, all of our one-on-one services, from pre-venture, meaning if you have an idea, but you don't, you need market research done, you need to know demographic information about an area, you need to know the competitive landscape, you need help with your legal organizational structure. You can work one-on-one with our consultants, absolutely no charge to the entrepreneur business. From there, we work hard to help access capital. We have relationships with CDFIs, community funders, and traditional lenders, depending on what type of funding is best suited for growth. And then, we can facilitate those relationships and make sure that your package is what an underwriter is looking for. We also offer educational programs, from one-day workshops to 10-week classes. And on main campus, right now, we have a nine-month construction management certificate series, which is for subcontractors that want to run a business. So, we get a lot of family businesses where the next gen is taking over, and they need to know how to run the business, or people who've been working for larger construction firms who want to branch out on their own. And that's really a management course for construction, and you can be licensed and bonded when you're finished that class. So, you can get everything you need. And we have a lot of free one-day workshops, and we do a lot of procurement government, so we have a government procurement specialist, who will be working out of the Ambler campus one day a week to help with contracts. We have relationships with SEPTA, the Department of Transportation, the airport. And it's not just for construction, but it's also for services. So, we are very excited. We'll have some new programming that's just at Ambler, which includes an incubator for veterans. So, we're starting the only incubator for pre-venture veteran businesses. So, if, that's for veterans who have an idea, but don't know where to start. So, we're going to take them from ideation through the startup phase and into revenue generation. And they'll be given office space, and the program will be free to them, and it'll be a nine-month program. So, we'll give them nine months of support with everything they need, absolutely free to them. And we have a global incubator on main campus, where we're working with companies that are coming in from the EU, who want to open branches regionally. And then, we have a community incubator. So, we love to have people close to us and build community. And I'm looking forward to building more community for entrepreneurs here in Montgomery County, especially now that I moved here in November. So, I moved from Philadelphia to Monco, and now I live here, and I'm very excited to be working in my own backyard. So, here are some of the stats of what we were able to achieve on main campus. So, procurement, we helped businesses get more than $61 million in government contracts last year. We helped startups and small businesses obtain more than $3 million in capital. We served more than 500 clients and granted more than 4,600 hours of one-on-one consulting free to those clients. So, we're really proud, and we're really looking forward to being here. And we're really big on partnering. So, right now, we're trying to listen. What does Montgomery County need? You know, we've been working very hard on main campus in Temple, which is kind of north Philadelphia. It's a really different demographic. And I'm very interested to know what you think is needed here, because we're not coming in with prepackaged programming. We're developing it to fill the needs that we see. So, we have a manufacturing roundtable started, where we'll be working with CEOs of manufacturing companies who are ready to expand and need a new strategic plan and access to capital for growth. So, we're partnering with Phyllis Ludwig, who you got to meet yesterday, if you didn't already know her, and Carl Kraus, one of our senior business consultants, who will be at Ambler five days a week full-time. So, we'll be fully staffed there this month. Very exciting. And these are some of our partners in Philadelphia and beyond. And we're really looking forward to creating new partnerships here, and being, you know, strong facilitators for entrepreneurs and conveners in Montgomery County. And so, here's the picture, and we opened yesterday. And that's how you can reach us.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
The proclamation.
No, just-
As I said yesterday, from my time at Temple, I know the great work that the SBDC does in Philadelphia, particularly in north Philadelphia. So, I'm thrilled to have you in Montgomery County, and I love the focus on veterans as well. I think that's really important. So, our doors open, and we look forward to working with you.
I like your water bottle.
And I'm a-
I know.
You're writing already, you see? Yes. You never have too much Temple.
Never.
Agreed.
It was great to be back at Temple Ambler. As you know, I spent three of my four years at the Ambler campus, and a proud graduate of the Fox School Business. So, it's great to see this accomplishment. And when entrepreneurs take that risk in the beginning, it can be overwhelming, and like you said, navigating whether or not to start an LLC, and how to start an LLC, the legal side of it, or how to get that initial loan to do a startup, can be overwhelming. And this center provides all those resources and guidance to make that process as smooth as possible, and educate them where they find necessary. And it's a tremendous asset to help the small business community in Montgomery County that drives our economy, and I look forward to continued success there. So, thank you for what you're doing, and we look forward to partnering with you along the way.
We appreciate the support.
And also, obviously, congratulations. It was a beautiful space. I'm so glad we got to see it yesterday. And as we were walking in, Mr. Zellers told me that one of the most frequent calls they get to our Commerce Department are from people saying, "How do I start a business? I have this idea." So, I think that this is going to be an extremely important piece of our commerce effort here in the county, and filling a need that really is beyond the capacity of the county to fill in the work that we must focus on. But what a wonderful partnership that we are hoping that this will be.
I have to say a huge thank you to Dave, because, I mean, the Commerce Department has been so supportive, and so easy to work with, and wonderful. And anytime I had any questions, Dave was right there. So, thank you so much to you and to everybody. Yeah, everybody's just lovely.
Good, good. Well, we're looking forward to lots of good news in the future. And the audience will be happy to know that we presented the proclamation yesterday, so you are spared that activity today. I know they've already got it framed and up on the wall, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Definitely.
We have another one.
Oh, we have another one? Oh, well, then, you've been not spared. So, there we go.
It's Temple now. They get two.
Temple gets two. Okay, well, then, come on up. We're going to do it again. I tried, guys. Let the record show.
Up there.
Yeah, all the way. It's so funny.
I appreciate that. I will try.
I know.
See you guys.
Thank you so much.
Twice.
Twice.
No.
All good?
All right.
Thank you so much. It's so good to see you again. Thank you.
You too.
Thanks, Dave.
Take care. Have a good one.
You too.
All right.
All righty. Mr. Edman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present details of this year's 2019 Montgomery County Transportation Program. As you may recall, last year, you as the Commissioner's body included in your 2018 budget line item for a new county transportation program, sort of a sister program to the Monco 2040 grant implementation program, too. So, there are now two similar programs like that. But this was transportation-focused, came out of the $5 vehicle registration revenue. And so, this is year two, and we want to take a few moments to brief you, as well as the public, on what this program consists of and how it will be run in 2019. So, just a couple of slides about context, just to bring us all up to speed again. What is the program? It's a competitive grant program for 62 municipal partners, and it's meant to improve their local transportation infrastructure. How is it funded? It is funded through the county capital budget. You can see there at the top, that line item, this is taken literally from our capital budget. The county motor vehicle registration revenue, $2.8 million in 2019, and then, under expenditures, a million of that comes out to deliver back to our municipal partners. Why is it needed? So, again, a little bit of context. Commissioners, as you know, your budget for the last several years have focused heavily on rebuilding county-owned bridges and roads. And the good news is that most of those bridges and roads are in about 2/3 of our municipalities. Bad news is, about 1/3 of them have no county bridges and roads. So, if Montgomery County had put all of its money to fixing the infrastructure that it owns, its county-owned roads and bridges, 1/3 of our municipalities would never see money come back to them. And with the inaction of the $5 vehicle registration revenue, that has increased the pot, and so, that would not come back to any of those 21 municipalities. And just for a sense of scale, in 2019, PENDOT is going to give a median payment to each of our 62 municipalities of $370,000. Now, that's the median number. Half of our municipalities get something lower, and the other half gets something higher. But altogether, they have to maintain 2,700 miles of roads, 330 bridges, over 1,100 signals. That's stuff that our municipal partners own, and they're only getting, as a median, $370,000. Just so you understand that in real time, Worcester Township gets about that amount. They have 55 miles of roads. Using PENDOT data, it costs about $100,000 to repave one lane mile of road. So, imagine you're going down a two-lane road, for one stretch, just the lane you're in, not the other lane, that's what $100,000 gets you in our region, according to PENDOT. So, they have 55 miles of roads. With that amount of money, they can repave about two miles of a two-lane road each year. And so, you can see that the amount that our municipalities get from gas taxes just doesn't necessarily help them keep up with maintaining everything. So, there is a need in some ways to make sure that this gets back and gets distributed equitably from the $5 vehicle registration revenue. What are the goals? We showed the slide last year. The goals for the program remain the same. It's more equitably distribute that revenue, to fund a large number of projects throughout the county as much as possible, to increase overall transportation investment in Montgomery County, and to meet the goals of our county comprehensive plan. So, quick recap, last year's round, $1 million funded 17 projects in 13 municipalities. We helped to defray the local match on Green Light Go Awards, which allows our municipalities to take that savings and reinvest it additionally in their local road network. It helped us to improve 95 intersections, upgrade 57 traffic signals, add 113 video detection cameras, 104 pedestrian crossing countdown signals for people who walk, 32 ADA ramps, that's American with Disabilities Act, and lay 6.6 miles of new fiber optic cable to help connect a lot of those transportation pieces together and back to PENDOT. So, this year, 2019, the new round, details. Again, $1 million, as you saw a couple of slides ago. Municipal applicants only. However, though, we have something in there this year, where we do encourage public-private partnerships. So, let me give you an example, and this is not a real example, it's just a fictitious one. Let's say, let's say Lower Gwinnett wanted to improve a roadway right by Gwinnett Mercy College, or right by the old Roman Haas facility. So, there will be an opportunity for them to come in for this program, fund it with some of their money, have partnerships with money for work from the university, from the developer, or from a business, and help cobble that together. So, we didn't want to just leave it just to public sector only. There are possibilities for funding partnerships with private nonprofit folks. Just funds construction, because as a county, we want to make sure that this money is going to actually building things, and that project can get out the door. Maximum award of $500,000. And local match this year is going to be a little bit different. So, what we decided to do was have sort of a dual approach. So, for any county transportation program funding up to $200,000 that a municipality is looking for, they would have an 80/20 match. So, they would have to put up $50,000- may have an act to and on study that allows them to raise money from developers under traffic impact fees when development comes in. Those larger municipalities may have more funds to go around in their budget, and so they could also compete and also still get a number of program funds. So, we can hopefully put everybody on as equal of a playing field as possible while maximizing the types of projects we can do. Because let's be honest, transportation funding and transportation projects can be expensive. They have been for a long time. They'll continue to be so. That's the reality we face. So, we want to make sure we had a program that could fund things that would get you bang for your buck. So, by doing it this way, if a municipality were to ask for the full $500,000, they would end up with a maximum $850,000 project. And anything larger than that would be 100% funds from them. So, we think we have a way to create an equal playing field. What is eligible? Last year, I mentioned that the Green Light Go program would give us our pool of applicants. Well, this year, it's going to open up to any municipality for any type of project. However, though, it still must meet some general eligibility criteria. And these are set forth in state law. Title 75 of the Pennsylvania statutes, which regulates municipal liquid fuels and other types of funding, including the $5 vehicle registration revenue, says that you can only use it for certain things. And so, we've narrowed that list down to things that we feel suit the county's needs best. And so, generally speaking, it's those three or four items. It's improvement and repair of roads and bridges, improvements of traffic signals and street signs, road striping, and sidewalks and trails, but only if they are in the highway or roadway right-of-way and are part of these types of projects. Just like the Monco 2040 Grant Program, there are focus areas, and so the three in 2019 will be whether or not a specific project is included in Monco 2040's list of transportation vision projects, projects that can help implement Bike Monco, or projects that have connections to or improve county-owned assets. These can be county-owned roads or bridges that get improved, or it could be other types of county facilities. We're leaving that wide open. So, finally, timeline. We want to make sure that our municipal partners in Montgomery County have plenty of time to plan for this because we have seen, working with other grant programs in our region, when you give municipalities a short timeframe to know about a program and to apply, they have to scramble. Every municipality, every municipal manager must get together with his or her board, staff, and others to figure out what do they have in their budget, what can they do, what do they have on the shelf to pull down, and that can take time. Many grant programs like this one also require a resolution from the governing body committing to the match and committing to the program. So, we want to make sure that they have the most time possible to plan for this. So, we are gonna put the guidebook out with all the details that I just mentioned, but in deeper depth. We're gonna put that out on around April 1st. And then municipalities will have two months to figure these things out, and then they will have another two and a half months to make the application. So, essentially, four to four and a half months to plan, to prepare, and to apply. We will select projects in September. We do have a selection committee like last year again that is made up of various county staff from different departments, as well as representatives from both the Montgomery County Planning Commission Board and the Montgomery County Transportation Authority Board, who, as you know, are appointed citizens in Montgomery County. And then in October, the goal is to bring those awards to the Commissioners for review and approval. So, with that, that's the program website, and I want to thank you for your time.
That's great. Thanks, Matt. Great presentation, and it'll be really interesting to see what comes in back in this year. Last year, it was pretty constrained. It was the first year we did it, and there wasn't a lot of time, actually, to your point. So, I think we made really good use of that money last year, but very much looking forward to see what kind of bubbles up from our municipalities and what's on their priority list. Can you talk a little bit, other than obviously being here and the Planning Commission's website and all that, what specific outreach are you doing to the municipalities so everyone's aware?
Sure. Using the Montgomery County Planning Commission's social media and online tools, I will be sending a message out to all municipal managers at least twice, notifying them that the guidebook is up and encouraging them. We will be posting things on our social media accounts, and in certain situations, we will probably be calling up various managers individually as well to let them know, just to make sure everybody gets the message. In our line of work at the Planning Commission, outreach to municipalities starts and ends with the municipal manager, and so that's how we want to use them as our first line of contact.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Very comprehensive.
Thanks for the update.
All right. Thanks. All right, before we move on into the voting portion of our meeting, I just want to acknowledge the presence of our Recorder of Deeds, Jean Sorgh, and Karen Sanchez, our Controller. Thanks for being here today. And with that, Mr. Dorton, you have an ordinance you would like us to consider.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, as you know, we've been planning for a bond issue. The finance team for the county began this process back in January of this year. Today, you're gonna be taking action on the bond ordinance, but before you do that, I wanted to give you a high-level overview of what our plans are, our financing plans, and actually recap some of our borrowings in recent years. As you know, we do fund the county's capital improvement program with general obligation bonds typically. And the last time that we went out to market was in 2017 when we issued the Series A, which was a total of about $50 million. That was allocated, 35 million to fund the capital improvement program, and then another 15 was carved out just to fund the road and bridge projects in the capital improvement program. And obviously, the debt service on the 15 million piece is funded through the Motor Vehicle Registration Fund. So, turning to our adopted 2019 capital plan that the board took action on last December, as you can see, there's three primary areas. The county campus plan, the projects that fall under the Planning Commission category and assets and infrastructure, those are the major drivers. And this is obviously on a budget basis, but when we put the budget out, we were projecting a net need of county funds in the range of 56 million to fund all the projects that are in the capital plan. In addition to that, there are projects that are specifically for the roads and bridge projects that are accounted for in the revenue category here that fall under assets and infrastructure, and, you know, that's estimated in the 12 to 15 million dollar range. So, turning to our plans for the new money bond issue that is upcoming here in the weeks ahead, there are actually three overall series that the county is projecting on issuing. These are tax-exempt general obligation bonds. There's the Series A, which is projected to provide about a net of 52 million of new money. This will be specifically for the capital projects that are in the 2019 adopted budget. 100% of the debt service relating to this bond issue will be funded through the general fund in 2020 and beyond. We do anticipate that this funding will carry us through 2019, maybe into 2020. They're just early projections. A lot of this has to do with when projects come online, the timing of them, and so forth. I would say that, you know, we typically have been a little bit behind on our spending. As you can see, it was 18 months ago that we had borrowed new money previously, and that's just about being depleted at the moment. So, we'll reevaluate our new needs as we go through the budget process later this year, and we'll update the board with what our thinking is in terms of the next new money borrowing for the capital plan. The second series is the Series B, and this series is standalone, $15 million of new money proceeds are projected from it. Same thing, tax-exempt general obligation bonds. This is specific to fund the county's road and bridge projects that are in the plan. Right now, there's approximately 35 bridge projects that are planned for in the budget for 2019. The Motor Vehicle Registration Fund will pay for 100% of the debt service related to this bond issue in 2020 and beyond, and this will be structured over a 20-year period level debt service. Obviously, the Motor Vehicle Registration Fund is an asset to us. It gives us a tool to be able to do a bond issue like this and aggressively address some of the capital improvements that are needed in the bridge area. And finally, the Series C, which was one that came up shortly after we began planning in January, and this is actually an advanced refunding of two bond series, the 2010 B and C series, and they were specifically issued. The B series was for the county's open space program, capital program back in 2010, and then the C was the fund, the capital plan itself. Both of those series were Build America bonds, which provided, or due today, provide a subsidy to the county of up to 35% on our interest cost. They're taxable bonds. PFM's evaluated the refunding of both of these series with tax-exempt bonds, and actually, it looks very promising at the moment based on where the market is. So, our typical benchmark or range of savings on a refunding is about 3%. So, you know, obviously, we've outperformed that in many of the most recent refundings, but this particular issue is in that range at the moment, and we are continuing to monitor the markets, and we'll give the board updates as we get closer to the sale date. If it, at one, at some point gets out of the money, then we may pull it, and it could be deferred to, you know, future time when the market's better, but we're not anticipating that. But there is volatility, and we do have a few weeks before we'll get to market on all three of these series. So, next steps. Today, you'll be taking action on the bond ordinance, which will authorize us to move ahead and plan for the sale, which is scheduled for April 3rd. Earlier this week, the financing team made a presentation to Moody's Investor Services for our credit rating, which we're waiting for. That will likely be released next week. And then we'll get ready for the sale, which is targeted for April 3rd. We'll come back to the board on April 4th. The financing team will report out the bond sale results, and then we close on May 3rd, and that's when we'll receive the new bond proceeds, which is timely and, as I said, is needed in terms of funding the capital plan for 2019. So, we have Bond Counsel with us today, Saul Yeoing, George Magnetta, and Silly Shen. George is actually gonna come up and give you guys an overview of the bond ordinance, a quick, high-level overview, and if you have any questions, he'll be happy to address them.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Dean. Good morning. In front of you is what is called a parameters ordinance. As Dean noted, there are, if you choose to, there are three series to be authorized, and you will be authorizing the sale of bonds on April 3rd within specific parameters that are in Section 3 of the ordinance. And this will be an invited sale on April 3rd. After the sale, you're authorizing the authorization by the Department of Community and Economic Development and all of the documentation to be signed and sealed and everything to be confirmed, the federal tax covenants, continuing disclosure, the offering documents that will be posted next week in preliminary form. After the sale, it will be finalized. Any questions?
So, actually, we need to get a motion on the floor before we can do that, so. Anything else in terms of presentation?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Just sit tight for a minute. So, is there a motion that the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners authorize the issuance of three series of general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $154 million, consisting of Series A of 2019 in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $56 million, the proceeds of which shall finance a portion of the capital projects, including in the county's ongoing five-year capital plan, a Series B of 2019 in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $18 million, the proceeds of which shall be used to finance certain road and bridge projects throughout the county, and a Series C of 2019 in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $80 million, the proceeds of which shall be applied to refund certain electoral and non-electoral indebtedness of the county and to pay the costs and expenses of the issuance of the bonds in a form and according to those terms and conditions which are stated in the documents that shall accompany this ordinance and shall be made publicly available and which shall be transmitted to the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Some moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Okay, any more comments?
I have a question. Mr. Dorton, you may know this. If not, perhaps Mr. Bonner would know. The 2017 borrowing with 15 million dedicated from the vehicle registration fee, how many bridges did that impact? I know the 2019 Series B is targeted for 35.
Yeah.
How many do you know that we've touched, whether it's design, planning, construction?
So, I don't have that exact answer, except that I would say it's probably in the same range because many of these projects are under design right now. And, you know, as soon as we knew we had a financing source and got everything in place, we began implementation of many of the projects that you're seeing today in the plan. They're multi-year projects. So, I would think that it's probably in that range of 30 to 35.
Was there a dedicated number in the 2017?
Well, in 2017 was when we issued the new money bond issue, where we already knew we had the motor vehicle registration fee, right? That was effective as of January 1st of 2017. So, we knew our plan was that we would finance that with a new money bond issue, which was completed in June of 2017. So, once we had those bond proceeds, we moved ahead to start funding those projects and bringing them online. So, between, you know, mid-17 into 18 and where we are now, I would say, you know, there's probably projects in the range of, you know, 25 to 35 that were, you know, either in the very preliminary stages or getting underway that we were beginning to fund with those proceeds.
So, from the 2017 borrowing, or 15 million, in the ballpark of about 30 to 35 bridges, were touched by that?
Yeah. Now, remember, those proceeds carried us through to today, right? So, we've been spending down those proceeds, you know, between 17, 18, and then here into 19. So, yes. And I can get a more exact number if you want.
If you could.
I feel comfortable that it's probably in that range.
Thank you.
One other question, Mr. Dorton. I know that this will depend a lot on how, at what level the bonds are actually purchased, but that 3% from the refunding, can you translate that, quantify that, and what that could mean in savings? I'm not gonna hold you to the number.
Yeah, yeah.
Because obviously, it's a fox.
And we try not to, you know, but I'd say, you know, based on, you know, recent runs that PFM has provided, you know, we're in the range of around $2 million over a 20-year period, you know, so approximately 100 to 130, $40,000 a year debt service savings.
That we would save in debt service.
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, any public comment?
I have a question.
Interesting, please.
Pauline Barchio, Townes and Township. I'm not well-versed in bonds, but from what I understand, when you sell a bond, you're giving a person an IOU, so you have to pay them, and I'm not sure what the, you know, so if you're saving, aren't you cheating the people who purchased the bonds if you're giving them back less interest than what they expected in the beginning? And also, it seems like you're just selling more bonds to pay out the last bonds. So, it seems like a cycle here, and I'm not sure that the website has been updated yet to show us the improvements or the changes in the bridge standing. And nobody has answered me, how many bridges do we have? The budget said 131, the website says 133. I'm just very curious as to exactly how many bridges does Montgomery County have? How many are under, you know, construction? How many have yet to be constructed or repaired, rather? And how many are good? So, those are the questions I have, and I know you don't want to answer anything, but the Sunshine Act says that you probably should because transparency is good, but, you know, I just would like to have an answer for these questions. I've asked the question about how many bridges before, and I still don't get an answer. So, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, Mr. Dorton, we look forward to hearing how it goes. Thank you. Ms. Holton.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have a resolution in front of you to acquire a 2.4
And also, it seems like you're just selling more bonds to pay out the last bonds. So, it seems like a cycle here. And, and I'm not sure that the website has been updated yet to show us the improvements or the changes in the bridge standing. And nobody has answered me, how many bridges do we have? The budget said 131. The website says 133. I'm just very curious as to exactly how many bridges does Montgomery County have? How many are under, you know, construction? How many have yet to be constructed or repaired, rather? And how many are good? So, those are the questions I have. And I know you don't want to answer anything, but the Sunshine Act says that you probably should because transparency is good. But, you know, I just would like to have an answer for these questions. I've asked this, the question about how many bridges before, and I still don't get an answer. So, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, Mr. Dorton, we look forward to hearing how it goes. Thank you. Ms. Holton.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. You have a resolution in front of you to acquire a 2.41 acre property in Lower Potts Grove Township. You can tell on the map that's shown here, this, this piece of property is very near to 422. 422, that bridge over the Schuylkill River was recently reconstructed, and we now have a trail bridge over to Chester County. We need the piece of property, the Banks property that's located in the middle there for a portion of the Schuylkill River Trail to get up to the 422 bridge. So, this property would, is a total purchase price of $12,000. And a grant from DCNR would cover $3,750 of the purchase cost. So, the remaining $8,250 would be covered by the county. The Open Space Board recommends approval of this, of this acquisition. And the purchase is consistent with our Open Space Implementation Priorities Report from 2015, which was a joint report of the Open Space Board and the Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites Advisory Boards.
Thank you. Is there a motion that the Montgomery County Commissioners, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the proper county officials to enter into an agreement by which the county shall acquire the Banks property, as more fully described in this resolution, for the sum of $12,000 and any additional required transaction costs in fee simple for the purpose that it be held as preserved open space and recreational use?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gail.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? I'll just add that I can't wait till that connection to that bridge is built. I'm very much looking forward to riding over it. Any public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Bonner.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before you this morning is a resolution authorizing the fulfillment of county responsibilities under Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission order relating to the rail highway crossing where Old Redding Pike crosses above the tracks of the Norfolk Southern Railroad. Brief background on this, in 2016, PUC order, that's the Public Utility Commission, stipulated that Montgomery County and Norfolk Southern Railroad must share the cost of the demolition of this bridge, which had been closed in 2012 due to deteriorating condition of the bridge roadbed. The impetus for this resolution today is that this work has been completed. The bridge has been demolished over the Norfolk Southern Railroad. And therefore, as, in keeping with the PUC order, the county is obligated to pay 40% of the overall cost of that demolition. Norfolk Southern Railroad is obligated to pay 60% of those costs. We will be working to make sure that the, our county on road in this portion of West Potts Grove Township is appropriately closed and signed off. But for now, this resolution authorizes us to fulfill the obligations as dictated by the PUC order.
Thank you. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to make payment to Norfolk Southern Railway for Montgomery County's 40% share of the costs of the demolition of Old Redding Pike and West Potts Grove Township?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Bonner. Mr. Stein.
For you is a resolution, a request from the Montgomery County Higher Education and Health Authority, which was created by the County Municipal Authorities Act in 1968, originally as the Montgomery County Hospital Authority. It has, currently is slated to cease existence in 2050. They are requesting that their term of existence be extended to 2060 in order to allow them to sell bonds of 30 to 35 years, such as the Thomas Jefferson University Bonds, which you authorized the TAFRA for last board day.
Thank you. Is there a motion that pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby authorize an increase in the term of the existence of the Montgomery County Higher Education and Health Authority to August 1st, 2060, in order to accommodate the issuance of bonds by the authority, which may have a term of 30 years or more?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Soltizak.
Yes. Pardon me. My son was here playing with my glasses. Okay, there are seven advertisements this morning. The first is an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for the Developmental Disabilities Certified Investigation. The successful firm will provide certified investigations with an increased presence and oversight of service providers. A contract will be awarded to the highest-rated firm. Number two is an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for in-home services for the Greater North Penn Area. The successful provider or providers will administer home health, home support, and personal care for seniors in the Greater North Penn Area. A contract or contracts will be awarded to the highest-rated provider or providers. Number three is an RFP on behalf of, behalf of Human Resources for Employee Benefits Consultants. The successful firm will provide the development, acquisition, and maintenance of group health, dental, and pharmaceutical plans and other group benefits for county employees and their dependents. A contract will be awarded to the highest-rated provider. Number four is an RFP on behalf of the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority for the, for property acquisition. The successful firm will present plans for the highest and best use of the Washington Street properties in Norristown. A contract will be awarded to the highest-rated firm. Number five is a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for street line painting. The successful firm will provide pavement painting services on an as-needed basis for the Department of Assets and Infrastructure. A contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Number six is a bid on behalf of public safety for roof replacement at the Fire Academy. The successful bidder will replace the roof over the old Fire Academy building and include an infrared scan for purposes of locating and replacing wet insulation. A contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Number seven is a bid on behalf of IT for computer equipment. The equipment will be for replacing aging equipment throughout the county, and a contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And as a reminder, all RFPs and bids are available on the county's public purchase website, monco PA dot org slash purchasing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding request for advertisements of RFPs and bids as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Soltizak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract.
Yes, the first is a contract renewal for multiple departments for title services. The contract provides for title search, title insurance commitments, and final policies and closing services for various county departments on an as-needed basis. This is the second renewal of four available optional renewals. The firms are Diversified Settlement Services, Inc., Tri-State Paralegal Service, Commerce Abstract Company, Inc., Elkins Park Abstract Company, Fidelity National Title Group, First American Abstract of P A LLC. Number two is a contract renewal for public safety for maintenance. The award goes to Kova Corporation in the amount of $21,250.98. Contract is for the annual hardware and software maintenance of the 911 Recorder System. Services are available through a P A Department of General Services contract. Kova is the authorized maintenance supplier for Communications and Marketing Association of Baltimore, the state contract holder for this service. Contract is available, I'm sorry, is valid for a period of 228, 19 through 228, 20. Number three is a contract award for IT for equipment. The award goes to CDW Government in the amount of $87,385. The contract provides for desktop, laptop, and tablet computers for the Office of Children and Youth. The equipment is available through a P A CoStarz contract. Number four is a contract award for public safety for software. The award goes to CDW Government in the amount of $40,700. The contract provides for software maintenance of Mobility X E for 1,000 mobility licenses for public safety agencies in Montgomery County. The software is required for seamless connectivity of all agencies within Montgomery County and allows for the connectivity to the CAD and record management system. Software is available through a P A CoStarz contract, and the contract is valid for a period of one year. Number five is a contract award for IT for a support agreement. The award goes to Microsoft Corporation in the amount of $235,354. The contract provides for assistance and support for problem resolution services for Microsoft products. Contract is for a period of 325, 19 through 324, 20. Number six is a contract award for public safety for identification systems. A, the award goes to Smith Detection, Inc., in the amount of $61,575.21. The contract provides for a replacement of the Aging Hazardous Materials Detection System. The system is used to identify unknown solids and liquids in one minute or less. The system is available through a federal GSA contract. Number seven is a, an award for Health and Human Services for a consultant. The award goes to C E Mendez Foundation, Inc., in the amount of $98,000. The contract provides for a drug and alcohol prevention curriculum for kindergarten through fifth grades. The program will provide a more sustainable approach to drug and alcohol prevention by training school teachers to deliver evidence-based programs proven to be effective in reducing the antisocial behavior in students in kindergarten through fifth grade. The RFP was viewed by 19 providers with three responses received, and the contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Number eight is an award for Health and Human Services also for a consultant. The award goes to a committee for children of Seattle, Washington, in the amount of The contract provides for the drug and alcohol prevention curriculum for kindergarten through 12th grades. This program will provide a social, emotional learning curriculum for students in kindergarten, kindergarten through fifth grade, which is Schedule A, and provide a youth violence and substance, substance use prevention curriculum and training for sixth through 12th grades, grades, sorry, which is Schedule B. Award is for Schedule A only due to minimum qualifications for Schedule B not being met by any one responder to the RFP. The RFP was viewed by 26 providers with four responses received. Number nine is a contract award for Health and Human Services for professional services. The award goes to Nina B. Korsch in the amount of $15,000. The contract provides for program development consultant for the Managed Care Solution Division. The RFP was viewed by 16 providers with two responses received. The contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. The contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewals. Number 10 is a contract award for voter services for equipment transport. The award goes to Clemmer Moving and Storage, Inc., in the amount of $102,000. The contract provides for the transport of election equipment to and from various election districts within the county for the 2019 primary and general elections. The RFP was viewed by seven providers with two responses received. The contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. The contract term is for the 2019 election cycle with four optional annual renewals. Number 11 is a contract award for assets and infrastructure for installation services. The award goes to Think Green LLC in the amount of $171,559. The contract provides for the installation of outdoor play equipment at the John James Audubon Center at Mill Grove. This spec was viewed by 13 providers with one response received. The contract is awarded to the only responsible bidder who has met all qualifications for the specification. Number 12 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for engineering. The award goes to Traffic Planning and Design in the amount of $39,810. The contract provides for an engineering firm to perform the required engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for the replacement of County Bridge 38, Moreland Avenue, over the branch of the Pennyback Creek in the borough of Hatbrow. The amendment provides for underground utility exploration, exploration, and the identification of utility conflicts and/or relocations. Revised contract value is for $315,087. Number 13 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for engineering. The award goes to Michael Baker International in the amount of $35,000. The contract provides for an engineering firm to perform, perform the required engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for the superstructure replacement of County Bridge 268, Easton Road, over the branch of the, the Tacony Creek in Cheltenham Township. The amendment provides for additional engineering services required during the post-design phase due to electrical issues and multiple revisions for demolition and the erection of the superstructure replacement. The amendment also provides for a project time extension through 12, 31, 20. The revised contract value is $169,300. Number 14 is a contract amendment for the Planning Commission for Engineering. The award goes to Panone. The contract provides for engineering services for the Ridge Pike Improvement Project. The amendment provides for a no-cost time extension through 4, 1, 21, which is required to complete the engineering for the reconstruction of Ridge Pike and the associated bridge over Norfolk Southern. The contract value remains at $6,452,586.48. Number 15 is a contract award for Health and Human Services for Training. The award goes to R I Consulting in the amount of $22,000. The contract provides for certified peer specialist training for up to 22 participants. The P A Department of Public Welfare requires certification for this health choices training and all, authorizes this vendor to provide this training. The training will occur August 5th through the 16th, 2019. And number 16, there are four contract renewals, four contract amendments for Health and Human Services. The providers and services are on the list in the back of the room. Finally, there are, is one award for the task force, and that is a, an award for trauma kits. The award goes to Griffin Logistics LLC in the amount of $72,000. The contract provides for the purchase of 122 traumatic cabinet trauma kits online and hands-on training for the city of Philadelphia. The kits and training software are proprietary to Griffin Logistics. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Soltizak. Is there a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as well as the contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Soltizak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comments? Any public comments? Ms. Brachio?
I have to take my name, Sujana.
It's not for us. It's for the people watching.
I understand. Pauline Brachio, Towns End Township. I have seen often, and this is from Mr. Soltizak, that Michael Baker International Engineering people, they constantly come back and need to have a contract amendment. Are they just not that skilled that they keep missing things? I'm really trying to understand why they keep coming back with their handout when, you know, if they're so good, then they should be getting it right the first time. Can you explain that, please?
As we, Ms. Brachio, you know, this is not a time for Q and A, but we will take your comment. Thank you.
It's not a comment, it's a question. And I don't get answers, and it doesn't matter. Do I have to write, should I write to you, Mr. Stein?
You're more than welcome to.
And will you answer me?
As we've done before, we will provide answers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, general public comment? Just a reminder, it's limited to five minutes. Commissioner Speer, did you? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Could you please identify your time?
Yes, my name is Elaine Nickman. I am from Montgomery County. I actually am directing my attention to the Controller running for reelection, who recently implemented a fraud hotline to report fraud conducted by county employees, Sanchez. A domestic relations hearing officer is causing the county to lose money from federal government Title IV dematching funds by her refusal to enter a child support order for my unemancipated child. This hearing officer alleged just last week on March 14th that she only enters orders for new complaints. My complaint is new. And also, the deputy director reiterated the same thing the hearing officer stated. Since Pennsylvania Constitutional Statute Title 23, 4321, Provision 2 and 3, and federal regulations require a child support order be entered for minor unemancipated children, therefore, there is no explanation why the hearing officer did not enter an order other than currying a favor for her personal benefit. The bio for the Controller running for reelection who implemented a fraud hotline, Sanchez, states she is not afraid to get involved and to try to help solve difficult problems. So, therefore, I am requesting an immediate investigation of the employee's transgressions and immediate resolution. If the Controller running for reelection won't investigate and fire the employee, then maybe the political opponent would be interested. So, in summary, there's no reason why an employee would want the county to lose money, the state to lose money, and for my child to be deprived. There's no explanation other than some sort of personal benefit that points to fraud. So, therefore, I'm urging an immediate meeting, and I mean today, and investigation.
Thank you. Any other public, I, I'm sorry, finished?
Well, in addition to this, I will just say, this is the result after the county has asset stripped me of everything in a family court forfeiture scheme. And it's a disgrace. It's deplorable and shameful. And this, I am not the only one, I'm one of many. And I believe it's also statewide, but it is unbelievable what they would do to a child. So, I'm strongly urging that the abuse stop and a fraud investigation occur immediately. And I also understand a new pension forfeiture state bill was passed yesterday. So, when employees are conducting fraud, they can say bye-bye to their pension.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Any other general public comment? Commissioner? Good morning.
Good morning. Before I-
yesterday, so when employees are conducting fraud, they can say bye-bye to their pension.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Any other general public comment? Commissioner? Good morning.
Good morning. Before I, uh, get into the business I'm here for, I'd just like to comment on the part of the meeting that I heard this morning, and it's, uh, really, really nice to see the commitment to the opioid crisis and veterans and the need for jobs, because jobs are a very, very important part of, you know, uh, cure to the crisis. So thank you and good work.
Could you just identify yourself, please, for the record?
I will now. Good morning. My name is Kevin Speer. Uh, good morning Commissioners and, uh, all county associates. Uh, my name is Kevin Speer, and I am the President of Board of Commissioners of Upper Moreland Township. Um, when the Montgomery County, uh, when Montgomery County initiated the, uh, Turnpike Carter Study, uh, we couldn't sign up fast enough. Uh, we did not realize that it really was a Trojan horse designed to generate support and finance for the Henderson Road and Route Sixty-three slipramps. We have lived with these traffic issues for decades, and immediately proposed an interchange east of the existing Willagrove Interchange, but we were told, unfortunately, that the DVR PC did not really include all of Montgomery County in the countywide Turnpike Carter Study. Huh. We later learned that this really was from the direction of the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Upper Moreland and Lower Moreland have significant, underutilized commercial and industrial parcels along County Line Road. And we had suggested a four-way slip ramp where the turnpike interchanges with County Line Road. Coincidentally, this happens to be an area of County Line Road that is in need of total reconstruction between the Turnpike and Second Street Pike. We had suggested the study include the addresses of EZ Pass holders' accounts to determine the origination point of trips from the Turnpike, for, for the Turnpike, and, um, elements of this still do not, are still not included in the current study. When we met with PennDOT on September fourteenth, uh, we learned that, um, trip origination and destinations are important factors in all traffic planning, and that they employ a sophisticated technology that can ping cell phones, that can determine the traffic flow patterns that were not used here. Uh, when you look at the document, the Carter Study, uh, the one thing that I was unable to find was the contributions made by land developers along Route Sixty-three that would be the true benefactors of a slip ramp at the location, Route Sixty-three. Um, also missing is twenty-year-plus, twenty-year-old, uh, analysis that indicates that Route Sixty-three is well beyond capacity, and the twin bridges that span the, the Turnpike and the Norfolk Southern right-ofways between, um, Twining Road in Upper Dublin and Computer Road in Upper Moreland need to be replaced to increase capacity along these routes. Not too long ago, Leslie Richards communicated internally that, uh, directed PennDOT planners and engineer consultants to work closely with local governments, as they were intimately familiar with the needs and demands of their local communities. Um, this was great advice, and I urge you to, to, uh, partner with Upper Moreland and Upper Dublin Townships, and concentrate on the most significant parts of this proposal. Four-way access and egress at the existing Virginia Drive West-only slipramps. Reconstruction of the Willagrove Interchange, primarily doubling the southbound six-eleven, which is also heavily supported by Horsham Township, the Borough of Hatboro, and the Borough of Hatboro along with Upper Moreland Township. Increasing the east-west travel lanes by another lane in each direction, and of course, to direct a DVR PC to evaluate the impact of a four-way slip ramp at County Line Road and the Turnpike. That can be done immediately. Um, thank you very much for your time, and, uh, I look forward to meeting with you guys, and great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And would you mind just leaving, if you wouldn't mind, a copy of your remarks with Mercure Emorio over here, so we can make sure we have that? Thank you. Uh, any other, and don't fall on your way out. Any other public comment? Sure.
Uh, my name is Pauline Brachio, Tommensen Township, and I would like to back up Elaine Nickman and everything that she said, because finally, they did, um, honor the ADA, and I was able to be there. And it was disgusting and fascinating, at the same time, how Ms. Hakaric could be lying through her teeth when she has the information right in front of her. It is really pathetic that someone can do that to a child. Um, and Karen Sanchez, I'm sure, yeah, well, I don't know, so I'm not gonna say I'm sure. I believe that she started this hotline because it is an election year, so you wanna look like you're doing something. But we spoke with, uh, Thomas Landauer, her deputy, and, uh, he was very nice, very helpful in the pro bonoary portion of, um, the fraud. But as far as, uh, the Director of Domestic Relations, Mr. Gary Klein, you know, everybody, it's like this hands-off thing. Um, it's, it's ridiculous. I don't know if he dropped from the sky, I don't know. But then, uh, Mr. Landauer did tell us that he's under the purview of the President Judge. However, you, and you were not here, the three of you were not here at the time, it was twenty years ago, but the Commissioners have to approve it. And so the Commissioners at the time did. Unfortunately, President Judge Del Ricci is part and parcel of the scam that, um, Gary Klein is, uh, conducting. You know, it, it's, uh, so heartwarming to see bipartisanship when it's, um, corruption, because that's what it is. You know, nobody gets along better unless it's for corruption, for evil, instead of for good. And, um, I really do hope that Karen Sanchez can actually talk to Ms. Nickman, because Ms. Nickman has paper. She has actual evidence of things that are going on over there, and it's downstairs, and it seems like nobody really wants to even look at it. So, it, you know, at least look at it, because, um, Mr. Gary Klein is gonna retire in July. He's been here twenty years. He's got a real big pension. The county could really benefit from that money, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, of course.
Good morning. My name's Brian Shannon. I'm a resident of Upper Moreland Township, Pennsylvania. Uh, Commissioner Speer gave some very interesting points that I strongly encourage you to listen to and research. There's a, quite a groundswell developing in Upper Moreland, Upper Dublin, Lower Moreland, over this, uh, interchange and the conduct of, uh, Dollar Valley Regional Planning Commission, as well as the Turnpike. More than anything, this Board of County Commissioners should do is come out with a public statement defining that to the residents of the, that area, so that everybody has a clear and distinct understanding of your positions, independent of the MCPC. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, uh, we will then move on to any closing Commissioners' comments? No? Okay. Then I will announce our next meeting will be April fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and take a motion to adjourn the March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gail. Any board comment or public comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. I'm sorry. April fourth, thank you. April fourth, two thousand and nineteen is our next meeting. Um, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes on adjournment? All right, meeting is adjourned, and call the Controller to the dais for Salary Board. Ms. Pardue, good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you a copy of the fi- final Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, with a timestamp of twelve-twenty-four P M. Of note, we have five retirees. Michael Barkowski from Assets and Infrastructure, after thirty-eight years. Greta Riley from Assets and Infrastructure, after twenty-one years. Joseph Castora from IT, after thirty years. Teresa Ronzano from Juvenile Probation, after twelve years. And Arlene Smuckler from Pro bonoary, after seven years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen Salary Board presentation, as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same? So moved. Moved by Controller Sanchez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Any general public comment on Salary Board? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn the March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board? So moved. Moved by Controller Sanchez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comments or public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.